...of the United States of America, considered republic, or strength, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two classes, AP's up, right?
Yeah.
Where you guys from? Same thing, you don't like this work, huh?
Neither the better.
Neither the better, eventually you can sit up here. Good evening, thank you for coming out in the wicked cold, I hope you didn't get caught up in the squall, as some did on the road. We have a relatively short agenda. We have a presentation on our reading program. If you'll take note, there is a 15-minute community question period noted in Roman numerals V. I have a logic to my question, if I'm available, that my question is gonna fail. And at the end you can ask questions that are asked. We ask if you don't use staff or students' names. You're limited to two minutes to address the board. We ask you to address the board. We don't allow reading statements or positions. Please ask us the questions, we can answer them, or we can refer you to someone, either the superintendent or someone who could address them. First item, we have both the superintendent's report and the presentation, so that after you're done with the board, you'll have a short talk. Alright, so we will take our leave and go down below. Is the cat mic on?
It's up there.
Above?
Yes.
Good evening, all the students, I almost feel like I have class, I'm back in the classroom again. Spent a great time for 33 years there. Welcome back, welcome tonight, it's great to have you here. Fortunately, we're not going into all of the budget, that gets complicated, and that starts next month, to what really determines the budget for the year, what pays for everybody. I'm just going to introduce to all of you, and I'm wearing a holiday tie to remind myself that it's really this time of year, I can't believe it, that Christmas is next week, and then we're right into the budget process again, it feels like I just finished talking about it. But this is what we're going to present each one on the budget. The top, so January, what we talk about is money, the budget for the Board of Education, the central administration, that's DOSV, insurance, the liability insurance that the district pays, and now there's a piece of that gets a little more defined and more concerned about cybersecurity now. Not just liability, but cybersecurity, because we experienced that. Fortunately, I don't know if the student, all of us were challenged in the classroom as students, challenged as teachers, when that hit, could have been worse. We lost no information, no data on staff or students was lost, thanks to Ken and what he did, and we didn't pay a ransom. And Ken pulled the plugs as fast as he knew that'd happen, he yanked him, unlike where I found Ken and I addressed 60 superintendents in Riverhead, that will be two weeks ago on Friday, right? We did that. And we told them about it, and Sag Harbor and Mata Top didn't pull the plug so fast, and they lost quite a bit, which they told us about, because what Ken told us, we informed them we lost nothing, they couldn't believe it. And then unlike Rockville Center paid $80,000, New York Park paid $90,000, and Bozies Upstate paid $500,000. And it's, you gotta understand, it's a big criminal business. I think it was $800 billion they got in ransomware last year. So, thank you Ken for the job you did, bringing it back, it wasn't inconvenienced for us, as a matter of fact, the reading presentation tonight, things were delayed because AmesWeb to get information on students was delayed because we couldn't use our computers. But now we are, and what Ken and I spoke about was our cyber insurance, telling districts, make sure you are covered if things happen. And when we spoke to the insurance company, the guy on the phone said, "It's amazing the amount of districts out there and everybody getting hit and no one's worried about their insurance right now." They shouldn't be, but that's, that's a crazy business. So that's what we talked about, central printing, Bozies administrative charges, Brad, Monica, and No, and John, every year I complain, that's not for the actual service, for the permission and privilege to use Bozies, you have a fee you have to pay. Transportation, that usually goes up about 2% every year, technology and debt service, so that's January, I know that you're already excited about listening to me about those expenses. In February, we got into, we got the budgets already, from directors and principals, people responsible for curriculum, what goes on, we'll call them in, and we'll probably cut their budgets, like we do every year, and get them down to what we consider reality and a hard place. Pub personnel services, there's something I have to point out that I do every year. We have been accused, the board and I, of cutting the special ed budget. You can't cut a special ed budget, because it's based on the student population you have, and it's based on IEPs. What an IEP does for a student, it dictates what services they must have. So, we get the list, the needs from the Director of Special Education, we add that up, and that's their budget. We didn't cut anything, we're giving them everything they need for those students as dictated by the law. We never cut special ed budget, we don't create it, the population does. Guys, ancillary areas are driver education, adult education, right? That's February. Now March is pretty interesting, because what we start with, now we start getting real specifics from the state, what our budget's gonna be. Because now we find out what the tax rate is on March 1st. Tax caps, sorry, tax cap. That's hard information, it helps really form our budget. And what we're gonna talk about is very important, operation maintenance rounds and security, athletic salaries and benefits for the whole district, everyone who works there. And particularly, we need to look at operation maintenance rounds more critically than ever, because we have needs as our buildings get older. We have a 30-year-old, 40-year-old, 50-year-old building in the district, and like, you work on your house, and God knows my house, I go home, I was surprised tonight, or on the weekends, something breaks, goes wrong. The heroes behind the scenes are working and fixing things every day, like you get. Boilers, AC, toilets, plumbing, electric. You don't hear about that stuff, but it's done every day, every day repairs happen. So, all these things are very important, to see what we need as our building's age. Now, I said the tax rate cap, I said wrong, is March 1st. State aid, what the governor gives us, we get April 1st. Now we have the critical things we need to know to really staple it down, get our budget out, what does it really look like? So we propose it with all those numbers to the public, the board, the board votes on it, and hopefully will accept it, and we're ready to roll until May. What's important on May 19th, you vote on the budget, the community, and you vote for the Board of Education. Very important to come out and vote. Knows who you're 18 out there? I hope you think about that. But you're voting on the budget, what the tax rates are being the community, the rest, and Board of Education votes that night. But on the 12th, the week before, I review the budget one more time, for the community to make everything very clear at the board meeting, and then the vote happens one week later, and that vote is the same date across the state. And that's very important. So, after tonight, five months in a row, it's budget time, okay? Critical for what we're gonna do, wherever we're gonna go, decisions, what classes you have, all that's affected, okay?
Gordon, could I use these two slides?
I'm sorry.
Could I use these two slides for you?
Absolutely. Want the one before?
You can go back to this. This is May 12th, this is the first time, April 15th, that the board takes an active role in a decision-making process for the budget. January, February, March, we encourage the administration to present us with as much information and the public, we participate in workshops along with you, so that we have a lot of different alternatives, different information, it gets honed down as we progress, to a point where, this is where the administration proposes a budget that the board will vote on. So sometimes, there seems to be misunderstanding in the community, that January, February, March, we're making decisions, and you may see things that may be contrary, then you may see things that are different as each month progresses, and it is intended to do that, because they're not board meetings in that sense, we do it all at once, but we start our meetings with a workshop, and a workshop isn't a place to have thought, to have conversation. We often have discussions amongst the audience as to where we're going and what we're doing, but this is not the time for decision. This is where we decide on the parameters of the budget. Can the next slide please? The May 12th is the first time there's a hearing on the budget. At that point in time, the board has now set the parameters and begins to use the parameters of what's called an expenditure budget. It means if we don't fill that portion of the budget, even though we may not and may have money elsewhere, you can't move money around in a school district budget, it's not like my business, where if I'm okay and I'm able to get a great staff person who does the job of two people, and I save some money, I can hire somebody else. An expenditure budget doesn't work that way. We have to put the money in, even though it may not end up being used in that fashion, but we're limited. The best example of that is driver education. We have driver education for us, just to skip ahead, what this process sort of is, and how antiquated this is, is a zero cost to the school district. Right with? Zero. It costs us nothing. We have to put that in the budget. That takes up room, think of it this way, as a glass that you have to fill up. That takes up room for what we, as the board, direct, the administration, we want to stay within the cap. So the fact that driver education is free, but we have to put the money in the budget to pay for it, despite the fact that we get all that money immediately back, it's not even state aid, it just comes right back. So we use up a portion of the budget, when, in my opinion, we don't need to. Why would we put it in the budget if we're just gonna get paid for it? So that's some of the things that we deal with in April, and then May 12th, and then the community votes on it on May 19th. Even in May 12th, we may, because of the parameters of the budget, may make decisions as a board to move things around, to accommodate what we anticipate as changes or what would be in our strategic plan. We have asked, starting last year, the superintendent, who has now made it as part of his goals and those of the administrators, that the school district principals and directors develop a strategic plan going forward that is informative, it is not just one year, but multiple years, so that we can see where we're going to be in years to come. And that can, that's like a five-year spreadsheet, that's everything. What book are we going to be looking at? What stem crown grade are we going to look at? It's not gonna happen for three years. Where do we put those things? You have to plan ahead. The example I'll give, because it's long since been decided, is, how many years are we into it now? Five? For kindergarten?
Yep.
Full-day kindergarten started five years ago. Seven years ago, the board started planning. A year or two before, we looked at space, space utilization, and process. It took that much time to figure out where will we be in three years forward. That strategic plan, if you expect to just turn it on a dime, that doesn't happen. That's what makes the school district successful, thinking ahead to where we need to be and how do we get there in the appropriate increments. And that's what occurs on the 15th, that's what occurs on the 12th, and that's the type of dialogue that we have as we go forward in this process. Thank you.
Okay. So, hopefully you'll be here next month as we get into the details of the first quarter budget. As Bob said though, those things that I present generally aren't stone. They become stone when we know what state aid is, and the tax cap, tax cap, and put it together in April, then it becomes firm, solidified in May when you vote. And now, move past that, I'd like to thank our elementary school principal, Rob Katna, and our middle school principal, Elizabeth Heine, putting this program together. Annually, the board likes us to present what we do, and frankly, since I've arrived, one of my goals was to rebuild, take apart the elementary school reading and writing programs and make them stronger, put things in place, make our kids read on the appropriate level, increase their reading levels, and we've been focusing on that, you're gonna hear about it, but now we're also going into elementary math, so can you hear that mentioned tonight too? And we're building the foundation in our elementary schools, stronger reading, writing, math, for when our kids get through the higher grades. And hopefully our result, because we have, if you listened last month, our incredible regents grades and how our kids perform, we want to stay there or even get even better. Now we have a 98% graduation rate, there's still some room there to get even better. But our exams, our reading exams, in all the surrounding districts, our students, last year, the opportunities as seniors, what they achieved compared to all the surrounding districts, we had seven first-place rankings when the state results came in, and two second at 10 exams. Seven first, two second. Something we're very, very proud of. When we go outside, another district can hold your head very high about that amount of time. But again, there's more effort, what they're gonna say tonight is the baseline where our kids start now in the fall. Then they report to me in January again, and show me the first testing comparison, where our reading levels at that time, the end of the second trimest. Then they will appear back in public in June, and give you the final report and show you the growth from the fall to the end of the school year, where our kids are. Okay? So again, Rob, you wanna take it away? Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Happy holidays, everybody, thank you for coming out. I feel like this is the closest I've ever gonna get from a high school class, it's okay. It's really nice. As Gordon hinted at, also Elizabeth Heine, middle school principal, in the past, we've come here, we've done reading, we've done writing, this year we just called it K to six curriculum, because we're also taking a look at math. So what you're gonna see tonight, the overview, we're gonna start by talking about AmesWeb Plus and FANNES and FANEL, those are two of our assessment systems we use to see how the kids are doing in reading and writing. I'm gonna talk a little bit about words their way as well, you're also gonna see reading, writing in the elementary school, we'll give you an overview of how it's going, reading, writing in the middle school, my son will give you an overview of how that's going, and at the end, we'll talk a little bit about math as well. So, I'm gonna start with, we're gonna start with AmesWeb Plus, and I'll remember to listen.
Okay. AmesWeb Plus is a new program that we're using, we did use AmesWeb, but the old license expired, so we're now into a new updated version called AmesWeb Plus. And it's a universal screening measure, that we get math and reading data, so that the teachers can use it to inform their instruction. There's three benchmark periods, we just finished the fall benchmark period that ended November 30th, it was a little delayed because of the technology issues we had, but we finished, and now the next benchmark period would be winter, we can do it anytime within the window of dates. The difference with AmesWeb Plus to what we had in the past was now we're using it on the computer to test our students. So it's very similar to what they're used to with the computer-based testing, now they're seeing it with their AmesWeb Plus assessment. The teachers have to schedule time in the computer lab, two days it takes now, normally it was taking one day for the old system, and then they do two days for math, so it's now a four-day computer sessions, but they get a very composite score that has more information. The reading has three components now, it never had a vocabulary component, and now it has a vocabulary component, there's a silent reading and an oral reading fluency component, and, move to the next slide. So the only grade levels that don't go on the computer are the kindergarteners and the first grade. They still get a paper stimulus for kindergarten, they're doing the same as they did with the old system, AmesWeb, they have a letter naming fluency and a letter sound fluency. Basically, a piece of paper is put in front of them with uppercase and lowercase letters, and they sit with the teacher one-on-one, and they tell, they name how many letters they can name in a minute, or how many sounds they can name in a minute, and they get a score. The oral reading fluency is just three different stories that the student reads while the teacher does some annotations on the computer, like if they have a miscue, they'll mark it wrong, but they're scoring it on the computer. And then two through eight have the same assessments, the vocabulary, the reading comprehension, and the oral reading fluency. Two out of those are done on the computer, and then the oral reading fluency is done with one-on-one administration, teacher and student. So when we get the tests done, the students have finished, we get reports, and one of the reports is called the AmesWeb Rainbow Report, and it's called a rainbow report because the old system used to have the below average in yellow, or one color, and then the average in another color, so it was like a rainbow of colors for different levels of students, but that's the breakdown, we're looking at the well below average, the below average, average, above average, and well above average, those are the percentages. And now the AmesWeb Plus has another report, we're gonna show you, that breaks the same data basically, but into instructional tiers in a pyramid form. So tier one is your general ed students, pretty much there's low risk, but they're not gonna progress, and they're in the regular classroom getting general ed, regular reading instruction. Tier two might need some small group instruction to help them progress, and they're usually your AIS students. And tier three, they need individualized instruction to help move them along, because they're at high risk for not progressing where they should. This is what the students see, I'm sorry you can't read it, but basically on the left is vocabulary student page, and it says someone who has courage is, and then they have four choices, brave, I can't read it, handsome, cheerful, honest. So they have a number of vocabulary questions like that, standalone vocabulary, and then on the other side, the right side, is an example of the reading passage, and there's a question, multiple choice, that they answer. The reading passages, there's six of them, so they do the vocabulary on one day of testing, and then they do the passages on the second day of testing.
So what's interesting is, you know, this is our results from the fall this year, as you can see, from K to four, they mostly get better as they get older, was interesting to us, looking at it at our school, first grade dipped a bit, we also had, I think, 18 new first graders over the summer come in, so it was just a kind of huge influx of kids, they might not have taken this kind of test before, it might be new to them, we don't know the kids as well. So that was the one outlier, was first grade for us, the beginning of the year, we kind of have some theories why, but as you can see, it pretty much goes up by the time they get to fourth grade, and then even...
And then the middle school data is very similar, it's progressing. When Rob mentioned that they had new first graders, I was looking at fifth grade dropped slightly from fourth grade by 1%, and that could be a result of a dozen new fifth graders that we have in the building this year, or summer regression, but the numbers are pretty high as far as those who are above average or, and, the only thing that middle school does a little bit differently, I think, is that the AmesWeb tests students on grade level passages, so we don't have our special education population taking the same test because they can't read on that grade level, so they have to do some other testing for their data.
And one thing I'll say also is, it does kind of show some validity to, you argue the second grade, third grade, fourth grade, it goes up and up and up, they're taking the test over and over. To me, it does show the validity in taking a standardized test multiple times and getting used to it, getting that muscle and building up, so by the time you get to eighth grade, this has all happened. So there's, to me, it does show there's a value in getting good at taking standardized tests.
So this is one of the new reports that the AmesWeb Plus is providing us this year, it's called the Tier Transition Report, and the fifth grade is on the left, sixth grade is on the right, and basically you have the fall benchmark on the left, and then when we test for winter and spring, we can see the change in the pyramid. The green at the bottom is the low-risk kids, and that's our highest amount that we have taking the fall benchmark, and then the dark moderate risk is the yellow, and then the red is the high risk. And you can see the numbers at the bottom, there's like, so for the fall benchmark of fifth grade, there's six students at that red high-risk peak, and that represents 4% of the population, and then the yellow, there's 22 students with maybe 15% of the population, and then the green is 117 students, 81% of the population being low risk. So, there's seven and eight, and as we go through winter and spring, we hope that green triangle moves up and the yellow and the red become less.
And now I mentioned what's similar, as we said, K and one are a little below the other grades, you see that red triangle in K, there it is in one, two, three, four, so it's getting smaller, as we said, the kids are getting, kids are at high risk according to this, they are getting less and less as the years go on, they're getting better at taking the test. The other thing we do is we do multiple measures, so when you say multiple measures, it's not just one assessment, maybe there's a student who's not good at taking a computerized test, but in elementary school, the core assessment we do for reading is called FANNES and FANEL, you'll see otherwise called F and P, just as the shorthand of your teachers say, it's basically, it was called running record, so the teacher sits with the kid one-on-one, they're gonna read a book with them. The books are Level A, being the easiest books, A books might be the title of sports, and the book is, "I like football, I like baseball, I like soccer." Z books are Harry Potter, Hunger Games, complex books, long, lots of words, the concepts are really deep. So the teacher will look to make sure they'll stop the student at the level where they're getting frustrated, where the book is getting too hard, and they find what's called their just right level. Because you don't want kids reading books that are too hard or too easy, you wanna challenge them just a little bit, to the point where they're still just enjoying reading. So the students, the teachers, it's a lengthy process, they sit with the kids, especially like you said, they have new first graders come in, they could be anyone, A being the easiest, D being the hardest, you have to sit with them, if they pass, you take the next book, if they don't do well, you might go back a level, so it's, it's a long process at the beginning of the year. They read within, then the band, you know, if you're reading a J book, you might, you can also read I books, K books, L books, within that band, you don't wanna be too hard or too easy. It's confusing sometimes, actually, my son just started kindergarten, my wife was not familiar with any of this, the teacher sits down with us and said, "He's reading at a C," my wife thinks he has a C, like A, B, C, F, and I walk out, "That's pretty good, you got a C," and she's like, "Are you excited about a C?" I'm like, "No, C's good." So it's a little confusing in a way, but when you go to Barnes and Noble, sometimes you can see on the back of the books, the elastic you can see on the back of the book, to help parents choose. We go between fiction and nonfiction, they also look for instructional level, so the teacher knows I can push them a little bit. At the end, there's always gonna be inconsistencies, because there's comprehension questions, it's an inexact science, there is a rubric, but you're gonna have some people who are a little bit of a harder grader than others, you're gonna have summer regression, like I'll talk about a little bit when I show our data, you know, elementary to middle school move, the programs slightly different, we talked about, there's all kinds of reasons, but to me, the benefit of... But to me, the benefit of this, we already have the Aims Web two to show us where the kids are. Anytime I can see my teachers sitting for twenty minutes with a kid, taking notes, seeing what the kid is good at, seeing what the kid is struggling with, it's a win. Because then they have that information to do something with it. In the elementary school, we formally do it three times a year, but in the lower grades, especially K one, two, they're doing it a lot more frequently because those kids move really fast. In November of last year, when we first did this, fifty-three percent of the school was grade level, went up to fifty-eight, end of the year at seventy-four. We started again in November in sixty-three, as Ms. Hines said before, as I was saying, there's summer slide. Kids over the summer always go back a level or two. It's just a little rusty, you've got to get back in the habit of doing this. So hopefully, we went up, you know, twenty-one percent last year, the goal is to keep going up. It's always going to be a bell curve, you're always going to have students who are on grade level, students who are way above, students who are struggling. But then you can do things like compare with the Aims Web and what for AIS students were having a hard time.
The middle school, the AIS reading teachers do the F and P, Fandasm Penel leveling on their students in November. They want to start their groups earlier in the year, so they use the level that the students left with at the end of the previous year. I wasn't here when they started doing the Fandasm Penel in the middle school, but the AIS teachers find an independent instructional and a hard level for them because they're working, you know, in small groups and trying to lead them to the next levels of books. Grade five students, they're just about finished doing their Fandasm Penel leveling. It's a little harder to get it done in the middle school with the departmentalized program because they don't have the student-teacher contact time that the elementary school teachers have. So it's taking a longer time to get them to do that. The classroom teachers find here at the middle school, the independent level, which is the first level, and they have a guide from last year's level that they left off with in fourth grade. But again, there's changes over the summer, or harder teacher grading, not so comfortable doing it. But they find the independent level because they have independent reading in the classroom, leveled libraries that they leave that level for to help the students choose their books. Grade four, last year's levels, came over to the middle school guidance office, and I had the folders brought up into the teachers' classrooms so they see all the annotations from the teachers from the previous years on the same folder. My plan is to have the fifth grade at the end of the year move those levels and folders up to the sixth grade. And I wasn't here last year to know why that wasn't done previously. So the elementary school finds the instructional level, and the middle school is finding the independent reading level, so there is some discrepancies between that for why we get that one and they get that one is because they have Columbia reading program down at the elementary school, and we don't have that reading program here. So we're looking for the independent level. So fifth grade reading, two teachers, the ELA team, Ms. Braga and Ms. Gallegos, they're using the Pearson Reading Street textbook, and they do whole group guided reading. Maybe every week and a half, they pull small groups and they do some small group instruction with those materials. There's reading skills taught within each unit and comprehension strategies. And their ELA grade is based on their Reading Street program with vocabulary tests and reading comprehension. As far as independent reading goes, they do have leveled libraries in their classrooms. I think Mr. Laviat helped get those in there last year. And so most of the fifth grade teachers have this thing called Tic Tac Toe activity, where the students read three books, and then they write answers in their reader notebook. And then those questions are similar to the Fandasm Penel type questions. And then, once they complete three books at a level, they can try the next level up. This year with Deborah Santoro at fifth grade, she's working well collaboratively. She came from the elementary school kindergarten. She's loving the change in age group, but she started a couple initiatives with the fifth grade teachers. Book a Day is where they take five picture books, and they share them among the grade level, and they're reading to the kids aloud, and they're discussing the different themes or concepts in the books with the kids, and they just absolutely love it, the fifth graders. And then they're doing a mock Caldecott right now. They're choosing ten books to read to their class that are up for the Caldecott Award, and they're based, you know, judging it on the artwork, because that's what the Caldecott starts with, is the artwork and then the storyline to go along with that. And each class is ranking their ten books, and then when the awards get chosen, they'll see if any of the books that they write win the Caldecott. So that's something our fifth grade teachers are all doing together. This is an example of the scope and sequence from the Reading Street textbook series. So you'll see they're looking at different genres, different reading skills, and comprehension strategies throughout the year. This is an example of the Tic Tac Toe questions that the students answer in their reading notebook. And that's a picture of the bulletin board up outside the fifth grade classroom, and as they read those books, they put the covers of the books up on the bulletin board to see how far and how many they've read. One of the things I heard from a teacher when I got here in September was a fourth grade student, now a fifth grader, came and said, "Is this all the books that we have to choose from?" And they're used to coming out of fourth grade classrooms with the Columbia reading program with probably like a thousand books in the classroom. So one of the things I did right away was offer to the fifth grade teachers to get some more books in there for choice, some nonfiction and fiction books added to those leveled libraries. So they each got about another three hundred books, and those are some of the bins of the books. Sixth grade reading, they read novels, pretty much similar novels between the upstairs and the downstairs team. They have leveled libraries in their classroom for student independent reading, ranging from P to Z. I just offered the sixth grade teachers another opportunity to order some more books based on student interest, or if they needed other levels that weren't P and Z, and maybe they had a struggling reader and they did some lower level books. So they're going to also be getting a few more books for their Level V books. Basically, they read those books, read aloud in the classroom with the students, assign maybe chapters for homework, and it's more comprehension that they're working on. Mr. Kaplan bought these books last year for, was last year, or was it, I don't know?
Oh, Wednesday ago.
Yeah. So elementary students, teachers got these books, and they are strategy resource books. And I figured fifth and sixth grade teachers might like these as well, so I purchased them for them. What it is, is lots of mini lessons to teach to your students. If you have a kid who's struggling with a particular writing issue, say like punctuation, they can go to this writing strategies book and look up, "Oh, let's pull a group and do a mini lesson on punctuation," and it gives them a quick mini lesson. And it goes along with the Columbia writing program. These are some reading initiatives here at the middle school. You saw Gingerbread Alley maybe when you came in, and the teachers are bringing their classics down to read aloud to them. That's Mr. Doyle up there, a staff grade teacher, is actually reading to the students in the hallway. Also wanted students to see that teachers and staff read for pleasure, so I worked with Ms. O'Reilly in the library to come up with something where the teachers and the aides could write a book that they're reading on their own, and the kids can actually see that Ms. Barone is currently reading, and it changes. So I want to have reading be, you know, really popular thing for students to see and do. Columbia writing, fifth grade, has the program, that five-year plan that Mr. Schnee talked about, did talk about expanding it to sixth grade. They do three types of writing, informational persuasive and narrative, similar to the elementary school. It's not a separate grade on their report card like it is in the elementary school, it's part of their ELA grade. These are the units of study that they are doing, and the dates that the teachers are supposed to stay within the curriculum calendar. And I put up some examples of narrative writing, right? So the writing lessons have mini lessons, and the teachers, you know, teaching them particular things to incorporate into their writing. So my first thing when they finish a unit, I ask the teachers to submit samples of writing, high, medium, and low students, so I can see if they're incorporating the mini lessons in their unit. And I was really pleased with what I saw, basically because they're coming from the elementary school with many years of writing now, and I am seeing a lot of stuff in their writing. So for example, this one had paragraphing, indentation, it had simile and metaphors, invent imagery. I'll read it if you can't see it, "Emma's eyes were like tennis balls," and I giggled as we continued trick-or-treating. So there was a sense of closure to the story, and it had catchy dialogue, and I just thought putting up a couple examples of writing would be interesting. Another one, these are other mini lessons, use of a small moment, a flashback, that one he's talking about, "He never felt tired as when he woke up at 4:00 AM for a plane trip to Florida." Setting the scene with catching the, "It was second league of the season, and my team was up 2-0." Dialogue, punctuating quotes to bring out some interesting anecdotes. And this last, there's one up on the top, it's hard to read, I'm going to read it out loud, but this is the cutest story. It was about this little girl who was a motherkind of baby, and she was slowing down the action to elaborate the important parts. So I'm just going to read it from here, because I can't really read it up there. "We're here. Your mom is in room 157. The hospital had blue doors, each had numbers on the top. I dashed through the hospital, reading the numbers, 149, 150, 151. Then I stopped. There it was. I paused, everything was about to change. I closed my eyes, took a deep breath, opened the door. My mom was holding him. I was speechless. Open the door, open the door." She was like, meeting her baby brother, so she was like, "Stop." So those are just some examples. This last one, he was using punctuation to slow down the reader again, but highlight internal thinking. "I went on the smallest slide because I didn't realize there was a bigger. After waiting on line for the medium one, I went back to the small one because the biggest was just a straight drop, and dot, 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 dot. I just don't want to die." So you can see they're very, they have craft, and it's fun to read. So I plan on collecting writing samples from their next units, which is journalism, so...
And Elizabeth did a great job showing how to read and writing books. It's similar at the elementary school, so I didn't include her examples because those were very clear. But the goal of writing workshops is to be able to express yourself as a writer, a story about babies, and that's, it's so great. You hear the kid's voice in there, and those are, again, these are the skills we're looking for in 21st century, being able to express yourself, write an email, write something, you know, convey your thoughts clearly in writing. This is their first, second year, doing full reading and writing workshop. Prior to that, we had done writing workshop, what was known as a basal reader, which is like a textbook, which is everybody gets the same textbook, they all read the same textbook. The goal, the vision you'll see at the elementary school, whether it's this, whether it's math later, is moving towards programs that are differentiated. Kids get what they need, look different ways for kids who need different things. Students get forty-five to sixty minutes of reading every day, forty-five to sixty of writing, might depend on the lesson, might depend, again, kindergarten, you're not going to independently do anything more than five, 10 minutes in September, so it depends, as a year goes on, it gets longer. Other components, they do read alouds every day, they do shared readings, interactive reads, together as a whole class. This is also our first year of Words Their Way spelling program. So in the past, we didn't really have, even before me, when I was here at the beginning, we didn't have a formal spelling program. One of the teachers said to us last year, "We didn't really teach spelling and kind of assign it." So you get Monday, you get, "Here's the ten words," Friday, you get tested on the ten words. But that doesn't teach you how to spell those words, it doesn't teach you how to spell those words or words similar, you just memorize those words. So we're giving you the fish, we're not teaching you how to fish. So this is a formal spelling program, I'll show an example in a minute. It also talks a little bit about parts of speech and things like that come into it as well, because you learn the rules of spelling. So you're learning the rules, and if it's a verb, you do this, and if it's a noun, you do this, so a lot of that comes into play. Then we also see, in the elementary school and the middle school, we've talked, there is great need for intervention in the area of decoding and spelling. And when you see that people are in need of intervention, a little bit as you go back and notice, what are we doing, whole class? What's the tier ones, as we said before? So that really spoke to, if we have so many kids who are needing interventions for spelling and decoding, we should step back and look, whole class, what are we doing for spelling and decoding? So that's what we're doing with Words Their Way this year. The hope would be that if you do that, you don't have as great of a need in the future for AIS with Wilson and Just Words. One of the things, I took this from our first grade room, you'll see teachers challenging their kids to read for longer and longer and longer. This is an example here, this mat, the students in the lower grades, the books are short, so they have tons of books, they might have ten to fifteen books a day they're supposed to read. They split them into two piles, these ones have read, these ones have happened, so they're flipping it over as time goes on. The head of teachers college, her name's Lucy Hawkins, I heard speak once, and she said, "The greatest indicator of student success in reading is their reading level. The greatest indicator of their reading level is how much time they spend reading books that are on the level." So the goal is read, 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 build those muscles up. So the teachers are always challenging, setting timers, "Today's ten minutes, tomorrow's do eleven minutes, twelve minutes," and you're reading more and more and more as the year goes on. This was actually a Ms. Hunt initiative last year at the elementary school, which we're still doing. We have readers and writers of the month, celebrating their efforts. I think Ms. Hunt said it's going to be going around the middle school.
Bring it to the middle school and try to write.
Yeah, and the kids are really excited. I saw a kid in the hallway like a month ago, just staring at his piece. I just thought, okay, so what are you doing? You're the writer of the month, and he's reading his own piece in the hall. So they get really excited about being celebrated. And we tell the teachers, it doesn't have to be the best reader or writer in your class, if someone put a lot of work into it, really, you know, always proud of their product. And the focus is on reading strategies. You'll see these little charts when you go in the room. This is, you know, how to get super smart about nonfiction topics. Again, because they're reading different books, you're not going to teach them a lesson on this book, you're going to teach them what you can do in any book. So any nonfiction reader can do this, any fiction reader can do this, it's a matter of which book you're reading. So it's really about the strategies, back with Ms. Hunt, the focus on strategies. You're teaching kids how to do it, no matter what book you come across, you can do this. So you're creating lifelong readers. Words Their Way, the spelling program, it's differentiated, so there's workbooks, these are free letter words. There might be a different kid in the book who's working in the class, who's working on, you know, long vowels. There could be another kid in the class who's working on really complex spelling. But again, they can be all doing it together, or this is a sort. You'll see them sorting these pictures, these categories, the picture of the jobbing, those with og. Later, they'll have to look at things like, when do you bring in the assignment E, when do you not bring in the assignment E, when is it OO, when is it OU? These kinds of things is what they work on. But again, because it's differentiated, at the beginning of the year, we give like a spelling test, and based on how the kids do, we sort them into groups. So again, it's what kids need. AIS reading, as we talked about before, if a student is struggling, like we said, most of the kids are reading on grade level at this point, and some of the kids aren't, and there's a teacher who says, "I can't really meet this kid's needs in the room." They bring this kid up for AIS, they come to what's called an IST, Instructional Support Team meeting. They come to the IST meeting, they say, "This poor girl is struggling with X, Y, Z, and there's different paths you could put them in." If overall, reading is the issue, comprehension, just kind of everything's an issue, hell a lot. If they're pretty good at comprehension, but they have a tough time sounding out, decoding the words, then they go to either Wilson Intervention System or Just Words. The last one would be if a student is struggling with fluency, which is, you know, if you are reading like this, and it's very labored, and you're not reading fluent, there's a program called Rate Leaps, which we can also do, which kind of picks up that fluency rate. So again, depending on the area of need, we want to point people in different directions. And again, that was something we started probably towards the end of my first year, because in the past, we're using the basal readers, the kids oftentimes went up into intervention groups, and they were kind of reteaching the basal readers to make sure they brought up in the classroom. But now we're pointing kids in specific directions based on what they need.
Middle school AIS is very similar. Students come to AIS through IST or teacher recommendation, and sometimes the performance levels on the New York State ELA are used. Similar programs, Just Words, Wilson, and small group leveled LLI instruction. I know I was talking to Rob, and there's some large numbers of students coming up in the middle school for Wilson, and we only have two Wilson certified teachers, so a little concerned about going forward next year meeting those needs because it's a two-year program. So if they started in fourth grade, they have to finish it in fifth grade. And even, you know, we recommend for AIS, parents have sent letters in and emails to pull their child out of the service. Again, being departmentalized in the middle school. Again, being departmentalized in the middle school, it's harder to meet the three times a week goal for students and we don't want them, they don't want them pulled out of an academic program or they just don't want the service that we suggest.
Which leads us to math. So as a principal, I'm starting to feel better about where we are in literacy, I like what we're doing, I think, you know, nothing's perfect or is tweaking it, but I'm feeling more confident about it. So last year, everybody started to look at math. What we do in the elementary schools, we use what's what you would hear informally referred to as the modules. And what that is, is when the Common Core rolled out, New York State put out a set of workbooks and lessons called the modules. Our teachers at the time, before I was here, they took the modules, they tweaked them, they made them a little better in some ways, in some ways they didn't like this, they changed it to this. So we have kind of a teacher-created program here, there's good, bad things about that. To me, the bad thing is, you know, we get professional development 10 times a year from Teachers College, where we're helping the teachers, we're working with them, there's teacher's editions, there's all these things. Were you creative yourself? None of it. You're just working off this workbook that you created. The other thing is, again, if you're teaching off the workbook, it's one size fits all. All the kids are getting the same lesson, all the kids are getting the same workbook. So when I came in, Teachers College is something I had a lot of experience with, I knew that was the way I wanted to go. I'm a little more open to math because there's so many different math programs out there. So we came up with a math committee last year in the elementary school, one or two teachers per grade, A to four, we met multiple times. First, we came up with criteria, we wanted something that was parent-friendly. You know, the common thing people say is the parents go, "I don't understand this math, it's different than when I was a kid, it's different, I don't understand it, it makes no sense why they do it that way." Want something parent-friendly, something teacher-friendly and something that allows the teachers to differentiate into kids who are, you know, is it easy for, give them something harder, kids are too hard for, give them something that, you know, is out their level. So we listened to presentations, a lot of different programs, go math, investigations, Envision, Math Focus, we liked Envision the best, Envision really met our needs, it had a lot of neat things with it, a lot of parent resources, the teachers thought of, you know, it really would work, it's very conceptual, there's a lot of discussion with the kids, which is great. So we decided, starting in January, we're gonna do a pilot, originally we said we'd do it in the elementary school, and then Ms. Hunt actually had a couple of teachers in the middle school said they'd like to try it out too. So two teachers are grade in A1, 2. In kindergarten, Ms. Maccles and Ms. Dorn, first grade, Ms. Poreo, and Mr. Whit and Ms. Klein's class, second grade, Stile and Sampson, they're gonna pilot it in the new year. So if you're in one of those classes, they'll let her go at home, probably even the end of this week or the beginning, right after the new year, telling you about the program and why we're doing it and that you're in one of the pilot classes.
I'll just tag on that. Fifth grade is gonna be Ms. Menz and Mr. Whistis, both fifth grade math teachers piloting it, and then sixth grade's gonna be Ms. Dundas, who will join with that letter going out.
Yep. So we had, the teachers had their first training last week, the 12, kind of the overview, how to get it out, how to get started. Teacher feedback was mostly positive, they really liked it. We are also interested, when we roll this out, and I'm gonna say this to whatever parents, I'm very interested in the parent feedback on the program. Because again, the program is newer to me, I've had limited experience with it, I've seen it in some places, but I'm curious how it is on the parent end as well. You get these, you know, this work home, how do your kids feel about it, how do you feel about it? And then at the end of the year, if we like it, when the end of the year comes, we would think about rolling it out, maybe whole school next year. The idea, the great thing about having a pilot too, is that we have teachers teaching it in-house, so even the teacher's not teaching, you could visit those classrooms, see inaction, see what's working, what's not working about it. So that's gonna be started in the new year and we're looking at, again, a math program similar to reading and writing that meets kids where they are and we can challenge kids as well. Nancy? See, that's where we are in the elementary middle school. I don't know if anyone has any questions? Yes?
What was the reason for getting rid of spelling tests? Am I just memorizing words? Cause I mean, like, why, why doesn't that work?
Well, cause you'll never memorize every word. So what we wanna do is we wanna give you the skills. There's some words, and we call them psych words, like if you see, if you go to elementary school classroom, they have what's called a word wall, and there's some words that you do just have to memorize, they break all the rules, like I can't remember one right off the top of my head. But there are ones where you say, you know, "This one doesn't follow, you just have to memorize it."
I'd say it'd be hard for kids to like learn rules and be expected to be able to solve words based off of rules.
I mean, it's not a bad point, spelling, spelling's hard. It's, it is a hard thing, but we're trying to give them tools where, even if you haven't had this, it's like, let's say, spelling words, so to speak, you would know, "Oh, that's kinda like this and I know that it's a double O or it's an OU sound." But there are still words, you're right, where we call them psych words and you put them on the word wall and the kids are still supposed to memorize them, which is not, you can't memorize every word.
They're usually small words that come from kids.
Yeah, or again, irregular words, that you'll never figure out, you just kinda have to know. Again, I have a five-word poem so many times, "This is the rule, except not in this one." And it's tricky, it is tricky. It's a good question, yes?
Any question on the plans to expand Columbia Writing to sixth grade? Do you have, do you know when you're planning to do that?
No, I just read the five-year plan, we're working on the five-year plan update and I saw it there, it was put on there from last year, I made it, so I'm just, I refer to that.
You were eager?
Selfish question, cause going into sixth grade next year.
We would like to see, you know, a lot of things, we told the board earlier, these strategic plans, this is Sweeney mentioned, very important to think five years out. Ken does one for technology, buildings and grounds facilities, has to look, they have a six-year plan going forward. And our principals get together and design one academically, curriculum-wise, their ideas, what we're gonna look like in five years, how things will change. It's only natural that you'd wanna make Columbia a 1 through 5, a 1 through 6 program, and that's why we're looking at the math from the get-go, from K to 6. I didn't think of it earlier today, but when I looked at this tonight, we've gotta thank the board, now this has been an effort, this has been an effort all the last five years. You know, we came in, saw what we needed, where we were weak, definitely in writing. And then we looked at the reading as well, the board approved and funded Columbia Writing, which was not inexpensive. Just recently, they realized, we tried to make our current books work with the Columbia Writing, we really needed to match it up with the Columbia Reading, the board supported that. We needed to differentiate where our kids, you can't have one lesson for all, we needed to have our kids reading on a level, not handing out one book to the class and everyone reads it, regardless of your level. So I brought in Fontis and Pennell, Ames Webb, the board funded that. Rob just mentioned words, you're their, you're their way?
Words their way.
Their way is the spelling, vocabulary, skills, we needed that, cause we saw what Columbia wasn't giving us, the board supported that. So what has to happen, we have to budget for that every year that goes in the budget to support those programs. You don't pay for it once and it's done. So now, again, we're looking at the whole program in elementary, we've got, Rob said he's happy with what he sees with the writing, literacy, kids are reading better, I, I'm very happy with that as being the baseline for reading at the beginning of the year. You'll see enormous growth again, and then the end of the year, it'll be pretty amazing, like, what'd you say they improved, Rob?
It's like about 21%.
21% improvement. So now, we want to see the same thing in math and we went to, we will probably have to go to the board and it'll be a little additional cost in our budget for the Envision Math Program. But we really need it. What they're using now was written when the Common Core first came out. Okay, about, what, seven, eight years ago? We need a unified differentiated math program where, look, I do my math homework with my son all the time, I'll probably have to do it on the home. But I'm looking at, I'm learning math a whole new way. And there are things, I said, "Didn't your teacher give you a guide sheet or something on this? You know, can I go somewhere on the computer?" When you have all this stuff on the computer and it's a parent, again, probably learning math all new, God forbid, as he goes into, you know, the junior high, high school. I wanted a math kid with a math and science brain, unfortunately, his mother teaches herself studies, I taught English, she's got our brains. So this is really important. If I could go on and I have online guides that can help me as a parent and I can just say, "Oh, I got it," and you go over and you straighten it out, that is enormous, you have all those services. So we don't have that with our old program. And again, the lessons are designed for kids, assuming they're all on one level, they're not. Good math, I mean, this is what we probably have in this room, these are really incredible kids, they're all on different levels. So that's what we do. Bob?
Just a couple of questions. Just to point out that the Ames Webb 2 is a classroom-based teacher assessment, they're participating in it. As you mentioned, they're with the students while they're taking it, they're taking notes and it's not something that we're waiting for the result on the end, they see it in real time.
Yeah.
And it's a local program that we can use to assess our students, to understand where we can work with them in this differentiated process. Is the building libraries, do they have sections that are level reading?
They do. I would say the majority of the library is not, because I think kids see the library, I mean, so much, one of the things is, so much is leveled, you also don't want kids thinking like, "I'm a D, you're a F, you're a K, you're a Z." So in the classroom, it's kinda like what we would say, it's like, "It's your dinner, like, this is what you gotta, you gotta do to work, this is the important part." Sometimes the library, when you visit the actual libraries, like dessert, I'm gonna take a baseball book out, I'm gonna go take this book out on this and I'm not gonna worry about that one, I'm just gonna take this book out, that's fine. You know, Spider-Man or whatever, when you're in a class, you're kinda doing a lot of the work. There is a small section, I don't know, elementary school is where it is leveled.
They're gonna be more than the same level.
Whereas the classroom's probably 60, 40, 70, 30% leveled, that's the norm.
One of the things to answer Monica's question, is the board has been focused in its view of the strategic plan of that. The school is a K through 6, 7 through 12 process. And so what you're seeing here is the evolution towards getting back to that as my profession. I recognize, we no longer learn to read, we read to learn, and this process is so fundamental, but we're getting back to some basics of reading, being able to use reading as a benefit to your writing, writing, teaching you reading skills, spelling skills, and then mathematics as the three fundamentals that go with you the entire time you're making your way through K through 6. And frankly, then those are the foundations that are your success for 7 through 12. The differentiation that occurs in K through 6 provides us the ability to meet the particular needs of the students and not a one customer type product. And that's what we've had in the past, that's what we've been changing towards, this differentiated classroom instruction based on the particular needs, the assessments help us, the Ames Webb, because it's real time, it's not, we're not waiting for something, the state decides to send us. We don't send anything outside, this is all local, this is our data, our futures, our grade levels, talk about it, that's why it works so well.
Okay. Time for the agenda.
Steve, why don't we start with you?
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of December 20, 2019, regular meeting as submitted.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ed. Any comments? All in favor? Room number 5, had an opportunity to look through the agenda, any questions on the agenda items as they're presented? Thank you. Six personnel. Ed, would you mind if we go onto that?
Resignation/Retirement. Director of Music and Applied Arts, Lawrence Roberts. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation for retirement purposes of Lawrence Roberts, Director of Music and Applied Arts, effective July 1, 2020.
I second that.
Comments? I'll look for some Larry brought to us in his time here, extraordinary excitement and passion in music, fine arts, business, consumer science, he was really involved in everything. If you've been to any of the concerts, been to the art shows that we now put on, had the opportunity to see virtual enterprise, even the proposals of things like CTE in various areas, he was a progenitor of that and he will be sorely missed. He brought a professionalism that was, just lifted everyone up, students and teachers and I for one, on a personal level, would greatly miss him and I believe his district will as well. Any other comments? All in favor? Ed, would you wrap that up, that session, please?
Office Assistant, Stacy Tingo. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Stacy Tingo, part-time office assistant, effective December 28, 2019.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Creed. Any comments? All in favor? Lisa, would you take B, instructional appointments?
Instructional appointments, one lead replacement teacher, Gabriella, and somebody else.
Kenseko.
Kenseko. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the following appointment, Gabriella Kenseko, December 3, 2019 through January 7, 2020, area of elementary, lead replacement position, compensation, step zero, BA.
I'll take Lisa's second. And Steve? Any comments? Gabriella has taken Ms. Drews's class this semester, this fall, and is a member of the community, she went to school game, so this was a great opportunity and she did a very nice job, that was quite important. Any other comments? All in favor? Lisa's number two, please.
Substitute teachers resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the following appointments, Daniel Catlin, appointment date, September 17, 2019, substitute teacher, at 111 per day. Andrew Reed, December 17, substitute teacher, at 111 per day.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ed. Any comments? All in favor? Amber, non-instructional appointments?
Substitute school district day, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the following appointment, Diane Carnero, December 19, 2019, substitute aide, $1.50 salary.
I second that.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor? Amber, continual, number two, please.
Number two, softball coach, Vinnie Amorato, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the following appointment, for Vinnie Amorato, replacing Michael Hathrom, December 19, 2019, for group 7, 8 softball coach, he's second.
Thank you, Steve. Any comments? All in favor? Action item seven, PE, education.
Action item, educational committee on special education, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education has no objections to the following special education recommendations and approves the authorization for the funds to implement the special education programs and services consistent with such as listed.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ed. Any comments? This is an example of, if you'll note this on your agenda, we don't see any information, this is driven by the Special Education Department and driven by the committee that exists for that individual student. Not all of these require funding, some may, this is really how the special education budget is created. At each meeting, you'll see this in this general form, we take that recommendation and we approve. All in favor? Steve, action item, business obsolete, someone has to do it.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby declares the following items as obsolete and approves the disposal as listed. We have a brown folding chair, instead of red mistling mats and yellow shoes.
Very nice of the week color code. Not, not the green chair, only the brown chair. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other comments? All in favor? Move on to Ed, donation.
Donation, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education
Donation, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby accepts the donation of a commercial-grade two thousand pre-core number five forty-six elliptical cross trainer, valued at approximately two thousand dollars, from Patricia LaRose.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Sir.
Any comments? All in favor?
Thank you, Ms. LaRose.
Thank you.
Lisa Prokureman suggests that you do the first paragraph as listed.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the first reading of the proposed Uniform Grant Guidance for Federal Awards Policy as follows. Procurement Uniform Grant Guidance for Federal Awards. Mount Sinai, uh, will follow all applicable requirements in the Uniform Grant Guidance Code of Federal Rights, two CPR, two CFR, part two hundred, whenever it procures goods or services using federal grant funds awarded through formula and/or discretionary grants, including funds awarded by the United States Department of Education, as grants or funds awarded to a pass-through entity such as the New York State Education Department for support.
As listed in the report. Ed, we have a second.
I second that.
Thank you. Comments? This is, uh, multiple pages of the CFR Code of Federal Rules regarding how this process occurs. We do get, and not significant amounts, but we do get federal funds, and we must comply with this. This is an excerpt from it, and we have to adopt it as our policy. Twice, you read this over again, the second time, any policy is always a first read, and then a second read with adoption. After the first read, any other questions? All in favor? And any other questions or comments? Good evening, Tom.
I'm David, uh, just wanna.
Get closer to the mic.
Um, just a quick question, um, I'm sure everyone has seen on Facebook this whole HBD that's seen, it's built, uh, just wondering, what is our districts? I've seen so many districts have written a letter to the governor stating they're, um, that they're against this becoming a mandated thing to attend school. I'm just curious to know, what is our status? Are, do we have a letter? Do we write one? Are we going to?
We do not, and the board does not, as a policy, we do not, uh, issue advisory opinions or comments.
Okay, just curious to know, I was wondering, you know, I know that the parents, like, the whole line hearing, are very concerned that this would be, you know, a mandated thing, and they really seem to jive with, you know, a sort of push-up or incommunicable thing that you could pick up at school. So, um, I was just concerned.
I, I could, I could understand that concern, but what I suggested when we encountered this over the summer with the initial communization requirements by the state, that the parents certainly spoke directly to them to see, uh, Ken Laval.
Okay.
Down the road, make an appointment with him, we will see you. Sarah Hankel is in the district, we have a lot of legislators here, that's where you can get the action.
Steve Engelbreit.
You'd have to be on tape.
Steve Laval, right, you, Engelbreit, Stoney, not any sense. But I wouldn't go there, bring your children there.
I was just curious what the school, what the school had, like I said, like, Miller Place had a letter sent out, all the other districts had, did do that, so I was just wondering.
We do not. Some did.
One way or the other, we don't take, or we've never taken, a political or an advisory opinion across the board. Parents do. Parents sometimes take their children with them to a visit, teaches the children something about their civil rights and their right to offer that type of comment. Thank God, we have that right. But the board, we have a limited jurisdiction, and that's our position.
Oh, just, I was just curious, like, was Kimberly on it?
No, quite all right. Right on, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you? My name's Kimberly Comby. I just wanna follow up a little bit, cause I'm just a little bit confused, forgive me for not understanding. My understanding is that a lot of districts have, um, done exactly what you're saying, not taken a political stand, that's not what anyone is really making this about, but they have kind of polled the community members to see if there was a consensus within the community, if this was a way that the board could represent the community in a larger numbers for something that a lot of people feel strongly about. Maybe you would do a poll, and they wouldn't feel strongly about it. I'm just curious why you wouldn't even consider kind of, you know, asking where the community is and kind of being on the side of the community, something that's pretty much very questionable.
We don't take a position one way or the other. The, we have to follow the law, it's not a law. At this point, we, as a board, our process, our position, is such that we don't take a split of a position, one way or the other, for any offer an advisory opinion. We don't have the authority to then poll people, to get consensus overall, it's not what we can do.
Well, other, several other districts have, I know Smithtown did exactly that, there was a lot of people at a board meeting who asked this, and so they put out a poll to the community, if the community was interested in the district writing a letter, you know, representative of the whole district, and it passed unanimously, so they did write a letter. So it is something that's in your, I mean, jurisdiction, if that's the words you wanna use, it's something you could do, it's something you're just choosing not.
I have to interject, I'm sorry, but I'm with her, I apologize.
Please.
I attended the superintendent's meeting last Friday, of twenty superintendents, not the majority of them and their boards rolled out. I have a list of over twenty fly schools. I'm just saying what I experienced last week, so that I. Not everyone did, not half. Three-quarters did not, because you can't, my job as superintendent, I have to enforce the laws of the New York State. If it's a law.
Of course.
I can't not.
It's not a law yet.
I buy that. No, it's not. But in the summer, I took the same stance. You have people who represent you with more power who will vote on this and have input. It's far and long worthwhile to go to them, tell them how you feel, and they're not far away, and they're reachable, and they will see you.
Agreed.
But the majority of those superintendents, one week ago, less than that, they and their boards do not take political stances in what proposed law or legislation, that's a legislator's job to do it.
Right. And I'm not disagreeing that there are other means, I, this was not discounting us in the community going to all the people that you mentioned, this was just kind of in addition, wondering where you stand.
It's a different way to ask the same question.
I'm sorry?
It's a different way to ask the same question. In the end, the board does not issue advisory comments or position.
Okay.
What the community does, and what you choose to do as a community, is all within your power to do, and we encourage that.
Absolutely.
I don't have one way or the other in terms of, I think it's a, when something you don't agree with, it's something within your power individually, and it actually carries a great deal to it, but.
Absolutely, and I'm, we're in agreement here, I was just trying to follow, because I just wanted more clarification on the.
Yeah, I need more clarification, too, and I'm sorry to inject, ma'am.
The clarification isn't going to be.
So, my question.
Sorry, Mike, you've interrupted three times.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, because you guys are just like.
I'm gonna ask you one more time.
Yeah.
Our position is we do not issue advisory comments.
So you, as a board, would not present a letter, like the other twenty-five schools, just stating that you're opposed, that you care about this. You wouldn't do that.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You don't have that type of position.
Come on, there's no reason to be here.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Yes, how are you, Brad?
Good, how are you?
Wilson, thank you.
Good. Uh, just a, a comment, not, not, sorry, no questions about disposal, but this is my three items, right? Sure.
Yeah, you can tell me what you're doing with the, the wrestling mats.
Everything's been disposed of. But, um, just, just a comment, um, you guys probably get a lot of complaints, um, I have a praise this evening. My daughter suffered a head injury, uh, a couple weeks ago, and had a fairly severe concussion. And, uh, the school district, and especially, uh, Mrs. Santoro has been phenomenal in helping her deal with that. Above and beyond what I would have expected, I kind of expected a lot of pushback in the severe restrictions she had, um, for, for coming back to school. The district was very responsive, uh, Mrs. Santoro has been absolutely great in helping her continue her education as her brain heals. And just as a quick example, she missed a lot of labs for her science, and as a result, did very, very poorly on, uh, her, her test that she took a couple days ago. Mrs. Santoro called us at home and said, this isn't the right way to deal with this, to have her fail that test. She volunteered to create a new test based on what she had learned to help her progress, and so she could be successful for, for future science. And I just wanted to thank, um, uh, Mrs. Santoro and the district for, for being so flexible with that and accommodating for student needs.
Thank you. This has been a longstanding process, frankly, started by Mr. Ray and the nurses. We introduced the trainer into the district, and we're a district that has adopted a concussion protocol for all of the grades, whether you're in sports or not. And it's very important to follow that protocol. The, the process of these concussions is cumulative, and you have to get it right starting forward. There are benchmarks to take, and then I'm assuming your daughter went through the benchmarks, and is tracked all the way through.
Yes.
And I'm very happy to hear that our instructional staff is paying attention to that, not surprised. And thank you for your comment. Any other questions?
I'll just go.
Hope she gets back to the show. Takes a while, takes a while, don't rush it. I'll take a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I wish all of you a happy holidays, we, if I don't see you, a great new year, and, uh, thank you for joining the students.
You're welcome back.
You're welcome back, there, Steve, next month. This is something that, frankly.